Okay, I'm going to call our village board meeting for January 3rd, 2022. Order please. Roll call.
Gary Hirsberg.
Here.
Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Bill Rannum.
Phil Willem's.
Here.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Okay, first item is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, Todd.
Yes, I can confirm that the notice of public hearing was mailed to residents on December 8, 2021. The notice of public hearing was published in the Tribune on December 17th and December 24th, 2021. Drafted agenda was published in the Tribune on December 31st, 2021. The final agenda was posted at all three official posting locations on December 30th, 2021. And the final agenda and packet were made available online on December 30th, 2021. And I'm glad to say that our new clerk will be here at your next meeting, Carla Endress, and you'll hear from her at that time.
Awesome. Thanks, Todd. All right, next we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I move to approve the schedule of bills.
Motion by Nyla Frye.
Second.
Second by Phil Willem's. Any other comments? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next, we have public comment. Is there anyone here who'd like to address the board on any issue that's on, off the agenda, or anything like that? Todd, do we have any sheets?
Yes, one sheet. John Dooley for public comment, 2611 Dublin Way.
On the floor.
Go ahead.
And correct, Chris, two minutes is the limit on public comment, three minutes for the hearing. Is that what you care to do?
Yep.
Okay.
I can make, I can make comments on that part, which were less than two minutes, but I'll try to get to that second. First thing I want to, I just like to ask, and I think I tried to get to it last time, and I didn't, and I apologize for that. I'd like to know what 75-25 really means in the breakdown between single-family and multifamily. I've never got a good explanation of that in any community I've ever lived in, so I'd like to, if you folks could really indicate what that is. So that would be one thing, and an important one. The second one would be the, the timing thing, and I don't, I don't get it. I was part of a public body, and we talked about doing that, and we thought this is just ridiculous. This is a nice little village. I don't think, if you want the community to come and speak, you, you want to hear ideas, you want to hear things, I don't think you should limit them. I mean, I think you should just use some common sense. And if somebody just goes too long, you say, hey, come on. And I think that most people in this community would understand that. But I think to, to limit, I got lots of great stuff to talk about. I can't do it in two minutes, I can't do it in three minutes. But I suppose by Robert's rules, she could give me her time, and I could extend it, extend it, extend it. That's not the purpose. I'd just like you to think about that. If you want, if you want folks to come here, good or bad, give them some time to talk, you know, make it reasonable. I don't know what that number is, I don't think there should be a number on it. That, that would be my comment, and I don't know why you got to that point here at the village, and I apologize for not living here all my life. I'm here now, and I'd like to participate with some other things, but like I said, I'm long-winded. Man, I can't do it in that amount of time. Now, on the, on the other side of that coin would be, you folks limit yourself to the two and three minutes. I don't think you do. Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you. Todd, any others?
Just to confirm, there, I have one from Amy Fox, and it looked like a mark on public comment, but definitely mark on public hearing.
Yep.
Just public hearing?
Uh, no, the, the public comment. For now.
Okay, so not related to the apartment?
It is related to the apartment.
Okay, then that would...
What is the general?
He told me to check that box, so that's a little bit.
Okay, if you have a general comment not related to, not related to the public hearing item, which is the forward development request, you're welcome to...
Okay, yeah, we have one for dealing with the, um, the apartment complex.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You can, you can.
My name is Adelaide Fox. I am seven years old. My friends and I love to run and play in the wide open space by my house. We do not need another big apartment building or senior living building in our neighborhood. Also, please plant more trees for us to climb on. Thank you.
Very good.
Do I need to be recognized after that, because that was separate?
That was Adelaide, and you're Amy. You're welcome to go.
Mine is also in reference to the senior living facility, and then also the apartment complex that's being proposed. I think in partnership with John, I think we need to look at what is that 25-75 percent? I also think every neighborhood should be limited to one facility of each. We already have a senior living facility in Kilkenny. We already have an apartment complex in Kilkenny. I'd like to see those spaced out a little bit more than to have one neighborhood known as this is the apartment complex area, and this is the other area. We would put, well, we probably would put two quick trips in each neighborhood if we could, but I'd like to see that we limit that, because otherwise we're, we're going to just be known as the area that has all the apartment complexes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Those are all of the slips that I had turned in.
Anyone else that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, we have... Oh, go ahead.
From the library. The library's hosting a vaccine clinic with Ma- Dade County Madison Public Health on Thursday from 3:00 to 6:00, and any of the, like booster, first or second doses are available, and there's Spanish translators on site for anyone that needs that.
Okay, and I am going to recognize Veronica Butcher from Troop 40 in Middleton, but she's a Wanakee resident. She's working on a merit badge. Can you want to share with, what you're working on?
Uh, I'm working on the communications merit badge.
Awesome. Congratulations. And then we also have Benedict Helenbrand from Troop 46 here in Wanakee. And Benedict, what are you here for?
Um, I'm working on citizenship in the community.
Very nice, very nice. So, I like to give just a little trinket to the people that have come in, and ask you, call a few for your work. So, here's a pencil for you. Thank you, and good luck with all your merit badges. Okay, next we have presentations, 150th Village's Christentennial Time Capsule. Todd, do you want to...
Yeah, real quick, and I'm glad we, we, on the last minute, hired a professional photographer. And so, I do want to note and give a shout out to Kylie West. Kylie's the executive assistant at Village Hall. She really did a ton of work to pull together the groups and organizations that contributed to our time capsule, and we had, we read off the list of all the stuff. One more item we'd like to put on, put in is a picture of the village board upon our, our celebrated ceiling of the capsule, which will actually happen later with a welding machine, not by me. So, but if you'd all like to maybe come up around the box. Also, big shout out to Enders Manufacturing, who provided this to the village for our event. There, on the backside here, it does say, I'll show it to you. How heavy is this, Kylie?
I'm not, I don't even know.
Oh.
Very heavy.
Yeah, it is, it is heavy. So, if you could all come up.
We work hard at that. All right, you want us to stand here?
Yep, kind of gather around. Roberta can tell you exactly where.
Kylie carried it up here with one hand.
Okay, Phil, smile.
Yeah, make sure to smile.
Couldn't be more perfect.
Eye with her eyes, right?
So, big thank you to Enders Manufacturing, Kylie, and all the organizations that contributed to, uh, to our box, so.
All right, well, thank you, Todd. Do we, there's, there's nothing after read, is there?
Walk this around. Workers' comp.
Is that a pre-workers' comp?
Yeah, can you call your workers' comp?
I'm okay. The doctor's right here.
I'm okay. Call it out. I stretched.
All right, thank you, Todd. All right. Next, we have public hearing and discussion action on a request by Forward Development Group to amend the general development plan for Woodland Crest to allow multifamily on Outlet 1 at the corner of Peaceville Valley Parkway and Simon Crestway. Todd, are you, or Brian, go ahead?
So, this is a continuation, the matter was before you initially, for a public hearing on December 20th. We're going to have a second public hearing tonight related to the rezoning request. The, the complete GDP amendment is in your packet, pages nine through 25. There's four pages of text, then three different exhibits related to it. So, again, this is, relates to the request to amend the Woodland Crest General Development Plan. This would allow 78-unit multifamily apartments on the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of Simon Crestway, so essentially just south of where Kramer Development is doing some commercial development at this time. I'm certainly willing to provide any information that you like before the public hearing starts, but I also don't want to be duplicative of what we talked about at, at the, the meeting in December. But it's basically, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. Village staff does recommend approval. It has gone to the Plan Commission and to the Joint Plan Commission, and both those bodies recommended approval of the amendment to the GDP.
The applicant is here. Applicant, Connor, Connor is here from FDG.
Hey, Connor.
Answer questions.
Brian, would you be okay with responding, or is it appropriate to respond to the 75-25?
Sure, I can talk about that. So, we, the village went through, prior to 2020, the village had language in its comprehensive plan. Essentially, what we're trying to do is, if you look at total housing in the community, 75 percent single-family, 25 percent multifamily. I do, the definition of single-family includes both a single-family home and duplexes, that anything more than two is considered multifamily. We, we did go through, I would call, a very open public process to give consideration to that ratio further in 2020, and through discussions at the Plan Commission and the village board. It was determined to maintain that ratio as we, we move forward, and, and to keep that language in the comprehensive plan. There is some flexibility that's provided to the Plan Commission and the village board to deviate from that 75-25 percent ratio, if, if you feel there's a really good project that would warrant it. Downtown redevelopment may be an example of that. It's something a lot of communities are doing. I will let you know that there are other communities that definitely ha- are, you know, kind of had that same target ratio. As was discussed as we went through that process, I mean, certainly, some of the reasons to try to maintain that ratio are, is you look at the different services that you have to provide. I know there's been a lot of discussion at the village board level recently regarding, like EMS services that are necessary, especially in light of the COVID pandemic. Also, community, Wanakee and other communities, when they have these ratios, are taking into consideration the school district. I mean, you want to have intelligent growth, but you'd also don't want to overburden the school district with too much growth in any one period of time. But that's, the 75-25 ratio is essentially, let's try to keep it so that we have 75 percent of single-family and duplex development, and 25 percent multifamily development.
Okay. Todd, do you by any chance have Tim's graphic that you could maybe pass out?
Yeah, do you, did you want...
Before we get to the public hearing, or should I get to that first?
You talked about this before you get to the public hearing, yeah.
Do you want Brian and I to walk through?
Yeah. Do you have, can you put it up on the screen, too? Do you have it there to be able to do that?
I can probably do that. Remember, our new clerk starts at the next, at the next meeting.
Got it.
Chris, did I say one more thing, too? Just, I want for, for the board to keep in mind, and also for members of the public. You know, part of the discussion that we had at the last meeting, where there were questions related to multifamily development that we've had recently, I think everyone in the public needs to be aware that for single-family development, we also have restrictions. In other words, we have, we, we also don't want to overburden the school district or our services with too much single-family development in a one-time period. I know that, ever since I've been working for the village, they've, there's been kind of a, a limit, I want to say it's about 125 in place. And if you look at the different development agreements that we have, whether it's for Kilkenny or for the Heritage Hills development, there are phasing limitations that are in there. All, I think, in, in general concept, also tie, tie back to the reason for why the village has the 75-25 percent ratio.
Okay, Todd, do you want to...
Yeah, I'm going to zoom in a little bit, so I can give people a good perspective here, so... Get a little closer. All right, so as you can see, this count goes back to 1999, when the village started tracking this. And Brian already explained the, the, the very basics of how this works. We identify the number of multifamily on the ground or permitted. So, if you see a number, like in 2004, there were 54 apartment, multifamily units constructed, those were permitted for construction. You'll see in 2021, the Coinesbury Project will be depicted as 50 units. Those would have been permitted in 2021. So, we've got your multifamily, single-family, and duplex, which count as two single-family. So, that count then is broken out down in the lower portion of the chart, again, showing you the multifamily number, the total, I'm sorry, the total single-family, and the percent at which we are at that, at that given year. If you look all the way over, oop, all the way over to the right, there you have the 20, 2021 figure, 116, single-family, 36 duplex, and 50, those 50 apartment units. So, I'm going to zoom in a little bit easier for everybody in the audience to see. Whoop. Wow. There we, there we go. So, this is a summary here that gives you today's snapshot. There is our total housing unit count, 5,722. Of those, 1,261 exist as multifamily units. 25 percent of our total housing count, 25 percent of the 5,722, is 1,430 and a half. So, doing the math, subtracting that number by the existing number of multifamily units will show you the capacity of units to get to the 25 percent point. So, today, that threshold is 1, 169 and a half. I'm not sure where the right point in time would be, maybe later in the discussion as we consider this further, but staff has done a, an estimate out multiple years to take into account further growth. There's a few things we know. We had 130-something single-family permits this year, so I used an estimate of 100 single-family homes, units per year over the next two years. We know that Heritage Hills, the Veridian Project, has approval on 200 units of multifamily. Now, they've indicated us a phased approach at the, at the construction of three different buildings there, but for purposes of this analysis, I also added 100 multifamily units in 2022 and 100 in 2023. I took it a step further than to include the 78 units proposed by Forward Development Group, and I can share with you that based on those assumptions, in 2022, you would have 61 multifamily units available before we reach the 25 percent threshold, and in 2023, you would have 11 units, multifamily units remaining to reach the 25 percent threshold. I'm happy to spend extra time on any of those details if you'd like me to. I can actually show you on another sheet, if I can find it. There we go. Those, those exact figures are shown here. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to print that off for you. And again, those assumptions I mentioned, there you see 2022, 100 single-family, 100 multifamily, and then the 78 for FDG.
Okay. So, do you, do you want to talk about this? Should we open the public hearing first?
Well, I mean, there's a fair amount of background, I think, that's been provided, so I think it would be fair to open the public hearing at this point.
Yep. Okay, then I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. Todd, I know some people...
Yes, we have John Dooley, 2611 Dublin Way. You want to go first, sir?
My New Year's resolution was not to talk negativity about anything, so this will be all positive. I think you've done a wonderful job of, of putting those numbers up there. I, I think that, but because you're going out into the future, I'm not sure how they play out. And I'm not, you know, I'm not beating up necessarily on building, but I, I want everybody to understand where I come from on this. Build the unit down here, build the 200 unit out there, and you're building a 50 unit this way. So, three gateways into the community, the first thing people are going to see is apartment buildings. Maybe that's what you want, I don't know. That's not what I would dream of when I came in here. So, I'm not so sure I like the placement. I don't think I'm going to stop you from approving this apartment building, and, and I'm not here tonight necessarily to do that. I think you should think about the placement of it. I appreciate the 75-25. That makes sense to me now, you say that, because you're counting a multi as 200 units, not as one or whatever. So, I get that part of it. I've just seen a close community here that we moved from go down this road, and started in, with the same great aspirations I think you folks are, and the developers finally figured it out, and so they built, and I, I don't know if you can even do this. I would love to see if, if in fact, they're going to approve this apartment complex that's going in down there, if you could approve it to make sure that it stays as a market-rate apartment. I don't know if you can even do that. But I know in the community where I moved from, they started with these wonderful ideas about these beautiful condos and apartment buildings, and then, lo and behold, in three to five years, they couldn't really get them going. So, then they had to come back and say, well, what are we going to do? We got all these buildings here. So, well, how about some low income in there? How about some market rate? I mean, not that there's all bad things about that, but, but there can be, I guess, and I, I just want to point that out, that I would hate to see that happen in this community. That part of it doesn't. So, I'm not beating up on that apartment. Connor's a wonderful guy. Forward Development is a wonderful people, and I think they're doing it with their eyes wide open. However, I'm not sure you folks are having your eyes wide open. So, one of my solutions would be for them, for those folks to say, let's, let's find a different location for this apartment, so we don't have all gateways with all apartments. Can't build it out in the swamp. And I thought maybe a good thing, if they're a benevolent company, what they could do is donate the land that they own out there to the city. Take the tax rate off, and then, now you can, now you've got an area where you could build your aquatic center, and you don't have to buy any, spend any money. Good idea, right? Not a negative idea. Nobody's shaking their head that that's a good idea or not. So, I appreciate what you've done here. I don't like the direction that we're going in this community right now. And I, I'd just like you to take a step back and think about the 50, the 200, the 78. Where do we keep going? What's the vision? You know, you can see that there's some more availability coming up in the next couple of years. That's, that's one of the comments. Just like you to, and maybe, maybe you've studied this for years, I don't know. I wasn't here years ago, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, again, we have Adelaide Fox and Amy Fox from 2608 Dublin Way.
I'll just speak on this one.
Okay.
I would like to see a more comprehensive plan for that entire area. I think piecemealing it out and approving it in sections without a clear vision as to what that entire area is going to be, is really going to limit it in the long run. So, I, I agree with John with, like, we're walking into Kilkenny, and we have these great big huge apartment complexes that really is a bit of an eyesore as you're driving in. But at the same time, I think your projections, if we hit a housing, if the housing market ends up falling apart, and we don't do a bunch of the stuff over in the Heritage Hills area, we're going to be at, over our 25 percent, because this apartment complex is going to be going through. So, I think, you know, we're cutting it a little close with the numbers, in hopes that all of these other developments are going through. But I just think a, a more comprehensive plan, so that we can see the big picture of that area, instead of just approving these in little pieces as needed. I would appreciate that. It's in my backyard. I, it's not what I signed up for when I built my house there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other forms, Todd?
No forms.
Any other folks want to address us on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing component of this. I'll, I'll just make note, and I, I can't speak for all the other board members, you guys are going to have to speak for yourselves, but I've been doing this for 14 years, and so that takes me back to roughly 2006. And as I look at what we built from apartments, and I mentioned this before, we built in 2006, 0, 7, 0, 8, 0, 9, 0, 10, 0, 11, 0, 12, 0. And each ti- or as that was going on, we were going from 25 percent to 24 percent to 23 percent to 21 percent to 21 percent to 20 percent. We were going down. And then in 2013, it looks like we had our, our first 80 unit. Todd, do we know what that one is?
Uh, Madison and Maine.
Madison and Maine. Was the first one that we did over that, that timeframe, which brought us from 20 to 21 percent. And then we had a couple more years of zeros, and then we started to pick up the pace a little bit on apartments. And part of that was our mix was getting low. We, we have very high rate of rental. We don't have occupancy in, in the majority of our units, and we've had developers that were reinvigorated to come here. At the same time, so we went from, in 1999, 824 multifamily to 1,311. In that same timeframe, we went from 1,925 single-family homes to 3,835. So, we doubled our single-family homes in that timeframe, and roughly added a third of multifamily. Duplexes, on the hand, we really did nothing with duplexes up until 2021, where we added 36. So, other than that, you see mostly zeros, a couple twos, and a four. So, duplexes were not real relevant or prevalent, but that's also part of our single-family number. So, we're currently sitting at 23 percent at the end of 2021. Our policy is 75-25, so we're not, I, I don't believe that we've ventured out, as far as the commenter heard earlier about, that we're creating an area that's just apartments. I, I don't think that's a fair comment. I think that there's apartments throughout our community, whether it's coming in on Q to coming in now on 113, 19, to right next to a village park, to Journey Meadow apartments, which are right next to the schools down in, in the middle of the community. So, we have apartments that are spread out throughout our community. So, I don't think that we're looking to say we're dedicating a spot by any stretch. I think we're looking at it, and we do have a planned approach with our comprehensive plan, which is in place for what that growth is going to look like. And we also have guidelines that we're working under for how we're going to expand those. So, to me, this sheet really does lay out where we've been and where, where we're going, but we also have a policy in place of 25 percent, 75-25, with a little flexibility. So, I, I met with John, and we had a nice conversation, and, and some pretty, very different than Wanakee. Very, very, very different than Wanakee with their approach and what they're doing. So, I don't, I don't see us, well, at least as long as I'm here, you guys can make a different decision, obviously, with, with what you want to vote for, but I don't see us going down a route of, all of a sudden, we're 60, 40, 50, 50. So, regardless, we're supposed to be talking about Forward Development Group, is that what you're...
No, 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 I'm, I just, I have, just wanted to, I have the ability to answer some of the questions that were made in the public hearing, and I just wanted to make you aware of that, in case you want me to.
Okay, perfect. So, you know, the, the, the public hearing is really about the community or Forward Development proposals in front of us with their SIP, and, you know, I think they have changed and modified this with, within the program that we're looking at. The side that's across the street from it, we're not really addressing, we're just addressing this particular parcel right now. I think that within the plan, the GDP, there is call for...
Well, within the comprehensive plan, there's language that talks, and that's what I can comment on, when, when you want me to.
Correct, which you're going to, I'm sure. I, I just want to make sure that the people that have addressed us are, we're hearing you, and I don't take offense when you say you're not, you don't know that we're necessarily keeping our eyes open as we're going through this. I, I absolutely keep my eyes open on every topic we talk about in the village. And I want it to be clear that we're going through this process the way we should be going through this process, and just like you're coming here tonight and speaking tonight is part of that process, the public hearing process for this. Those are really my comments at this point.
So, just to address, so this, this GDP amendment is part of the, the development that includes Hy-Vee, includes the Kramer Development that is being constructed right now. We've expanded the Kramer commercial to, on Q. You have this multifamily on the west side of Q, and then you have the land on the east side of Q. You have this multifamily on the west side of Q, and then you have the land on the east side of Q. And I just wanna make you aware that there is language in the comprehensive plan. It says, east side of Simon Crestway is suitable for multifamily residential use, such as apartments or senior housing, to serve as a transitional use between the commercial uses west of Simon Crestway and the existing neighborhood to the east. So, I think the Plan Commission and the Joint Plan Commission made very clear to the applicant that, okay, yep, we're gonna let you go ahead with the west side of Q without having complete clarity on the east side of Q right now. But everyone has made them aware of the language in the comp plan of the east side being a transitional district.
You mean the west side of Simon Crestway?
I'm sorry, I keep on saying Q, I apologize. East side of Simon Crestway is a transitional zone. I know that there's been a lot of conversations with the neighborhood there. And so that is definitely being, going to be considered. Exactly what's gonna go there is transitional. The other thing about looking forward, going back to the process that we went through in two thousand and twenty, village staff, Tracy and Kevin, had put together, looking forward to the different single-family and multifamily projects that we had in the queue. And so when, I would, I mean, I can give you the numbers if you want them, but definitely as part of that process of looking at the ratio and what things looked like in two thousand and twenty and how we anticipated them to look in the future, the village was looking at all of the different projects, whether it's Heritage Hills, Woodland Crest, Kill Kenny West, Arboretum Village. So all of that was being thought of throughout that process.
Thanks, Brian. Board members' comments?
I have three questions for you, and then I have one a clarification. My three questions are, what will the approximate cost be to rent these units? Whether it's studio units, one bedroom, or one bedroom plus den and two-bedroom units? Does the rental fee include the underground parking, or is that built separately? And will there be onsite management? And my clarification is, on page eight, it says the overall residential unit density on the site is anticipated to be approximately thirty dwelling units per acre with the possible unit mix as follows. At what point do these things become more concrete?
Through the, so, if the village board were to approve the G D P amendment, before the development can move forward, the applicant's gonna have to come forward with a specific implementation plan, which is essentially the next step in the zoning process. They would have to go to the Plan Commission and the Joint Plan Commission to get approval of that S I P. And at that point, that unit mix would be, become concrete.
So it doesn't come back to the board?
It doesn't come back to the board, although, you know, I would tell you that the language in this talks about, you know, anticipated to be approximately this unit mix. If the applicant were to come back as part of the S I P process, and this applies to this development and all P U D developments. Essentially, you go through the G D P process, and then you come forward with the S I P. The S I P has to be generally consistent with the G D P. If it's not, then they would have to get an amendment to the G D P, which would come back to the village board. So, I mean, if their, if their unit mix is, you know, twenty-six, 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 that's gonna be a minor enough change that it wouldn't come back to you. But if they're gonna come back with something more dramatic to that unit mix as part of the S I P, it would have to be a G D P amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Can I elaborate on your question, Nyla? Let, as a, for instance, if the board, if the board is concerned today about the total number of units being any number higher than seventy-eight, can they stipulate in their G D P approval process that that would require board level approval?
Yes.
Okay. And if you'd answer the questions, please?
Could I?
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Connor Kearney with Forward Development Group. Thank you for the questions there. I can provide some clarification. So, the anticipated costs for renting these units, I believe right now we're projecting anywhere from a dollar fifty per square foot up to a dollar eighty to a dollar ninety per square foot. So, for simple math, if a thousand square foot unit is renting roughly a dollar fifty a square foot, it's fifteen hundred a month. So, and that's subject to our property manager's input, which we're going through right now. And that kinda ties to the S I P level of the discussion where that detailed unit mix will be determined. We are still going through that kind of shuffle, but we're trying to keep those similar proportions to what is shown in that General Development Plan Amendment document. Did that kinda cover what you, for the costs?
Yes, thank you.
Then the parking fee, generally, yes. The rental rate is inclusive of the parking fee. In similar developments, we've just had it all included as one. That's just an added amenity such as a community room, grilling station, something that, you know, we advertise as an amenity for the project. I can confirm with our property manager, but typically, we don't separate those out.
Okay, thank you.
And then onsite management, this likely will have an office onsite. We're still working through the details with our property manager. But we found generally, a project this size or larger, it makes sense to have onsite management.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I'll just tack on quick if you don't mind with that. So, generally, when we've received these proposals, developers have stated that a hundred units is kind of the threshold where you put onsite person on. This only being seventy-eight, you're still confident and you're feeling that there is going to be an onsite manager?
I don't wanna commit to it right now, that'll be at the discretion of our property manager. It's a similar property manager that we have on other developments too. So there is some efficiencies. We're, you know, a development project that we have two hundred and twenty-eight units. We have obviously an onsite management, same group. So they may be able to run certain things remotely. But we are planning a smaller office space, whether it's full-time at the location, whether it's part-time. There's gonna be some sort of presence that I can't commit to that'd be full-time, you know, at this stage. But when we do bring the S I P forward, that's something that will be determined.
Okay.
Thank you.
Phil, any questions?
No, just a statement. I've been doing this for twelve years, not quite as long as you, but I can remember that the fact that there are going to be apartments in that area and the fact that there's going to be more in the area, it's no surprise. They were indicated, drawn in, potentially here, potentially there, back when Kill Kenny was presented to us, back when Woodland Crest was presented. So, it's not new. We've known about it for a long time. And we've been wide open with our eyes to look at it and try to hold it down and keep it good-looking. I'm surprised that so many people have switched and like to live in apartments now. But I think it's, I think we're properly reacting to it. So, I'm not surprised. I'm kinda happy. I realize that a lot of people don't like where it is, but we can't put these deeper into the housing units because you don't want them there either. And we do have to have a little bit of density. Otherwise, we're gonna be spreading out into the beautiful farmland that no one wants us to spread out into. So we're kinda in between a rock and a hard place there. That's it.
Aaron, any comments?
I guess just echoing what Phil said, that, you know, a bit of density is good, mixed in. Kind of what you're saying, there are a lot of neighborhoods that don't have any multifamily. I don't wanna say, but probably the majority of our subdivisions don't have really any multifamily. So, yes, mixing it in. It's definitely a transitional area. And I was excited to see that there were like studio, wide bedrooms. I think in our housing study, we talked about, we don't really have a lot of studios, studios. And just is another good option for people of all ages that want apartments or in transitions and wanna be here for a short time or a long time, so.
Gary?
Well, I probably only went around here, it's been around long enough since these policies have been in place. And I think the one thing these policies has allowed Wannakee to do is be very consistent with our tax rates. We've been, we've had really good financial people at Wannakee that have been able to create pay-as-you-go funds. And we've been, it's made Wannakee a very financially, you know, financially strong position as a community. So, these policies have been very good for the community. We talk about these specific developments. You know, again, they've been in the plans. I think the transition zone, I mean, the apartments that we're talking about tonight, I think it's a good fit. The transition zone, that we've been listening to neighbors for, you know, over a year on that. And I know at the Planning Commission level and the board level, we'll continue to listen to those neighbors. Because that's an important transition from a multifamily area and how do you blend that to a single-family area. So that's something that we'll all be concerned about. And how that happens in the future is important to all of us. So, we are listening.
So first, Todd, does that include the older adult housing, the units that are listed? Is that in that?
Oh, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that at least the most recent, the assisted living facilities and memory care facilities are categorized under something other than housing. Is that accurate?
That's, well, for purposes of our certain impact fees, they are identified differently. I do, I'm not sure if in this chart, if the senior housing is incorporated into the multifamily numbers. I do know that when we made the, so, prior to two thousand and twenty, for the language that we had in the comprehensive plan that dealt with multifamily, senior housing was accepted from that. When we went through and made the change to the comprehensive plan, senior housing was not an exception to the ratio. And so, I don't know the answer to whether or not the senior housing is within that twenty-five percent capacity. But I know that we did make that change for the comp plan for two thousand and twenty.
Is there a way to find out, or is the?
I'm sure, I mean, I don't think we'd be able to find out tonight. But certainly, there would be an ability to modify the chart if necessary, moving forward.
To me, that's the EMS costs are obviously, they're real, they're gonna go up. They're basically per person events. So, and that's my long-term. And that has to come, it comes out of the rest of the population, obviously. The second, I look at like the water, when I look at it, is there, when I drive by, I haven't driven by there with envisioning. I'm sure you guys have figured it out, the water drainage works there?
Yes, yeah. The regional outlot, actually, it's not dedicated yet, it's under an easement. But that's on the property east of Simon Crestway. In the southeasternmost portion of Woodland Crest, that is a regional stormwater facility sized to accommodate the water from the lot that we're talking about.
Even projecting this change?
Correct.
And Bill, I mean, I can let you know that as part of the S I P process, certainly whatever utilities are required for the development would be hammered home and to the extent that anything new needed to be put in. That's where at the S I P phase, any of those requirements would be established. So if there was, for example, a concern with a lack of stormwater or with a lack of water facilities, the development, they would not be allowed to move forward with the actual S I P until those were fixed. And I'm not saying there are issues, I'm just saying that's the stage at which those issues would be completely resolved.
Because we've seen water stretch our system, our projections, you know, and I haven't looked to see how big the pond is and how deep the fishing will be, you know, I mean, how good the fishing will be. But, you know, the reality is that that water has to go somewhere. And it's, right now, it's kinda going on Prairie.
Right.
Not going there next time, so.
Right.
And I am in favor of the density that has service, like this appears to be density with service. As far as the buildings that are going, the restaurants next, future grocery stores, they're in that area. So they are less travel for things.
Okay.
I've got a couple messages out to see if I can, Tim would probably know like that if he was here. So, I'm trying to, I'm texting with him to get that information.
I think we just have to be honest with ourselves. I mean, if we're just changing the numbers, that's not great.
Okay. Connor, a couple questions. So you mentioned roughly a dollar fifty a square foot. So the studios are gonna run around seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, based on that?
We would have a range. I'd have to check the, our most recent financial model. But the studios generally are the higher price per square foot just because they're smaller units. So the range would be, say, a dollar fifty up to a dollar eighty or something like that. So the larger units would be the lower price per square foot, and the smaller units would be on the higher end of that range.
Okay, you're good, because I was trying to get you on that one. So, well done on that, on your response on that. I don't see any, I don't have any other questions. If board members don't, it looks like our options, I mean, right now, the staff recommendation is approval of the amendment to the Woodland Crest G D P is presented in the attached document entitled Second Amendment to the Woodland Crest G D P. I think that, I think you guys have come back with a nice plan. The building is, I find it appealing to look at, but there's others that would say it's ugly. That's an opinion for everybody, you know, the colors, to whatever it may be. But I do think that you've come with a very good program for this. So, I remembered my last question. So based on the studios and one bedroom, two bedrooms, is the parking, because we talked about parking the last time, is that parking gonna match?
Well, again, my understanding is the preliminary review of what's been proposed, you know, the plans that have been proposed, is parking is gonna work. Parking will be a key issue to make sure that all the parking requirements are satisfied once we get to the S I P stage. But my understanding is Strand and M S A at least have taken an initial look at the area and some of the concept plans, and they do believe that parking is gonna satisfy. Is going to, I mean, well, part of the motion, part of this is, when you look at page, I wanna get it in the packet.
That's page four, Brian.
Oh, okay. There is language in here on parking that, so it talks about, yeah, at the top of page, top of page eleven of your packet, the parking provided along the share, the top paragraph deals with the parking. And then the G D P itself says, "A variation from strict adherence to the requirement of two stalls per unit may be requested at the time of S I P, provided such request results in at least one stall per studio slash efficiency unit, one and a half stalls per one-bedroom unit, and two stalls per two-bedroom unit." So, I know that they have, that Strand and M S A have taken a look at this. We have had some parking discussions at the Plan Commission level because I think there's a belief that maybe our existing code requires a little too much parking, which then relates to too much impervious surface area, which is problematic. The way that this G D P is drafted is to give a little bit of flexibility once they get to the S I P stage to determine, you know, to satisfy kind of the new parking requirement as opposed to maybe the existing parking requirement in our code. But the bottom line is, this project will certainly be held to the same standards that of some of the other approvals that have occurred in the past two years related to parking, where we have deviated a little bit from our parking standards.
Okay. My, Connor, maybe you can help me with this then. So, with parking, Nyla's question earlier was whether or not that was included in the rent. If we're forecasting two parking per unit, does that include two parking spots or one parking spot? And then, where do visitors park? I wanna keep people off of that road. That's gonna be a major thoroughfare, as you know, with Hy-Vee coming in there and the other retail. So I'm trying to at best keep people off that road. So I wanna make sure that we have adequate parking onsite for not only your residents, but guests if at all possible. Not that I'm deviating off of what our requirements are. I'm just, I'm wanting you to help reassure me that we're not gonna have lines of cars on that street, knowing we're gonna have a busy thoroughfare there.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So as the site's conceptually laid out, I think it's Attachment A or Attachment One of the G D P amendment here, it is complying with current zoning. It's, I believe it's a two-to-one ratio. Generally, we aim for a one-to-one ratio underground. So matching the units with an underground space, and that would be what's included with your rent. Anything else would be surface stalls that would be not an extra fee, but it would just be open for use. So that's kinda how we break it up. And right now, the way it's drafted, it allows some flexibility to have one stall required for a studio, one and a half for a one-bedroom, and then two stalls for a two-bedroom unit. So it's just a little bit more of a detailed breakdown of the requirement as opposed to the previous blanket two-to-one requirement.
And I'm saying this only because my biggest fear hasn't come to fruition yet. And that is the parking that's by our fields, by our schools. And the parking that goes on there and the dangers that come with that. And I see this as another, just a longer stretch of that going down in there. So, okay. Other comments or motions?
If we could add to the motion that if they go.
If we could add to the motion that if they go beyond 78 units for the building, that it would come back to the board?
So are you making that motion?
Well, I didn't know if you, did you make the motion?
We didn't make a mo- no, I just read, I just read what the staff was recommending.
You just read it, okay.
I have one more map question.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. Okay, I just don't know if the red line on Exhibit A, the map, is blocking it. Is there a sidewalk on that side of Simon Crestway, too? I'm assuming that will be included?
Do you mean the sidewalks west and east?
Yeah. Like north of Simon Crestway.
So.
If that red line is just blocking, is that a sidewalk drawing or?
I think it's showing the property lines.
Yeah.
So, but are you asking, so, there is, there is a path on the north side of Peaceful Valley Parkway, and I can definitely see a sidewalk on the east side of Simon Crestway. Are you asking if there's gonna be a sidewalk on the west side of Simon Crestway?
No, I think in the, she's talking in the north.
Like, I just don't know if that's a border or if that's the.
Well, the red is, the red is the border of the property, correct.
And, but it kind of covers up, is that the sidewalk then, like, that it's kind of going half over?
I don't, I don't think there's a, are you talking in north side?
Yeah.
On the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think there's any sidewalk there that I see. I mean, people walk through the parking.
Like this, is this a sidewalk?
Yeah, I believe that is sidewalk.
Right.
On the west side of the road going in front of the building.
What do you need?
So the west side of the building does have a north-south sidewalk connection that connects to lot two.
West side, not the west side of Simon Crestway.
Like in front of the building?
Yeah, so you're talking about, so that's the, that's the west side of Simon Crestway.
That's installed.
Okay, I just don't know if that was a, like, the map, how it looked.
Yeah.
Would, if that was the border or if that was the.
Sure, sure.
That's good.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, before you take a motion, I'm trying to, I'm trying to do my best to get some clarification, and I, it is a little confusing because we had a modi, I think you're right that there was a modification sometime back when we didn't include and then started to include senior. But what I can tell from the chart we have, in 2017, Bright Star Senior Living opened. They have 36 units. I'm not aware of another multifamily project that year, so I'm assuming the 36 you see in multifamily in 2017 is accurately Bright Star. The, I'm finding, the original proposal for Home Again Assisted Living was for 70. I haven't confirmed the final count, but they, that project was permitted in 2016, and we see 64 units listed under multifamily in 2016. So I'm speculating those two projects are identified there, but I don't, I don't have a confirmation by digging further into it, but that seems pretty clear to me.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's good. Thanks, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Nyla.
I move to approve the proposed amendment to the general development plan of the Woodland Crest plat to allow multifamily use on Outlet One as presented in the document entitled Second Amendment to the Woodland Crest GDP, and if the plans go beyond 78 units for the building, I would like it to be brought back to the board.
Second.
So the motion by Nyla Frye, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our new business, we have discuss and take action on resolution terminating tax incremental district number two. Renee, is this one yours?
I can, I can speak to this.
Go ahead.
So just about a year ago, on February 1st, 2021, is when the board adopted the resolution to extend tax incremental district number two via the statutory process to provide the increment for affordable housing. So basically, the one-year extension, and that money goes to affordable housing projects. We're still required by statute to formally terminate the district within one year of that resolution. So basically, by February 1st of 2022, we need to do the resolution to terminate it, and that is what is included in your packet.
Okay, board members' questions? Comments? Go ahead, Gary.
I'd make a motion to approve tax incremental district termination resolution to the village of Wanake Tax Incremental District Number Two.
Motion by Gary Higford.
I'll second.
Second by Aaron Moran. Any other comments? Okay, call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Next, we have discuss and take action on community aquatics facilities, planning, financial impacts, location possibilities, and review of options related to referendum process.
We covered a lot of bases there, but there's three, three key things that we identified in your memo. One, one relates to referendum timing. The other, and I'll work with Sue, Sue can tag team with me on telling you about where we've been over the past couple of weeks in our discussions, and then, then we're gonna enter some discussion on potential location, which brings us back to the first item regarding referendum. It has become very clear to staff that it's, it is, it exists as an impossibility to provide the board with accurate financial information so you can meet your January 25th deadline to have a fully informed question in April. And we, we wish, we wish we were in a better position for you to succeed at that, but we're just being really honest that we cannot give you that accurate, accurate information for two reasons. One, because we, because of not knowing for certainty on our site, we can't express certainty on how that site selection will affect the cost implications. Second, relates to the complexity of making certain that the impact on operations and its impact on our levy limit, there's two, there's just too many questions mark, marks surrounding that at this point, to tell you whether you also need to ask a question about whether the levy limits need to be exceeded or not. And Renee and I, we worked really hard over the past couple of weeks amidst, amidst the holidays, amidst several staff vacancies and other challenges to try to get us there, and we just cannot accomplish it for you. Did, is there other?
Right. I mean, we're still working with Ellers to, to get a lot of that information. I know you had other information, information you wanted to be able to make your decisions to, that there's just not enough time to do. But, I mean, I'm pretty certain that it, that the combined indoor/outdoor as it stands would require us to exceed the levy limit, but I just don't have the exact numbers and how that process would even work.
We think we can be in a better position with more analysis and more certainty on our expenses. I will tell you, though, we did check, Sue and I talked a bit about timing for referendum and whether there is another option. I think Sam might have even mentioned it at our prior meeting, but there is, and I confirmed with the league municipalities, there is going to be several state-level positions and federal-level positions on for primaries on August 9th. The, so that would be an opportunity for the board to ask a referendum question of the voters. That language is due to the county by May 31st. So, I feel like we'd be in a much better position to advise, advise, advise you further as long as we have some answers coming on some of the pieces like our, our discussion in a moment about location. Questions on, again, we, we wish we could have gotten there for you, and we're sorry that we weren't able to be in a position to help you hit the April, April date. Any questions on that? Okay. With that, Sue, are you willing to talk a bit about some of the conversations we've had over the past couple of weeks, our visit with the work group, et cetera?
For sure. So last Thursday, middle of the holidays, we convened a Zoom meeting inviting all of the people from the aquatics work group, all of our stakeholders, invited them to join in on a follow-up conversation with George from Councilman Hunsaker to talk about the design of the, of a proposed pool. And I guess I would add to the, the complexity of coming up with operating costs for a pool means that we have to decide exactly what pool we're gonna put forth to the, to the residents for a referendum, and we don't have that solved yet either. It's a complicated conversation. But we had, we had a two-hour meeting last Thursday with a lot of good input, and we do expect to have those results back for you. At our meeting on the 18th, George will return remotely and will be presenting his final findings of the study for the board at that night.
Any questions for us on our other process items to date? If, if, well, why don't we enter some discussion about location? I've got a PowerPoint here that we can walk through. Whoop, there we go. So, it, it's a good wish to say, boy, it'd be great if we could just stick it right there and then everybody can get equal access to this pristine five-acre piece of property that's gonna serve our needs. That, that doesn't, that does not jump off the page for us. We don't see that feasibility. So, we have four, four alternative concepts for us to consider, easily called North, South, East, and West. So zooming in on those here, in no particular order, this, this site called Hogan East is due east of the Wanake Business Park. The ice rink is right there for, just so you can get your bearings, Octopi, I'm sorry, the ice rink is right there, right there. This is Arboretum Drive coming out in that new subdivision in this area. Octopi is here, and other construction is going on in that area. Stotson Sons is up here. So, this is the area that in our comp plan suggests a mix of uses, including expansion of our business park as we have now, along with mixed uses to put, to include a variety of commercial, housing, and industrial uses. And then, to the south here, additional residential development similar to what you have on the other side of Arboretum Drive. So, we think that this location kind of starts to create a little campus related to the ice rink. It's very visible for those driving that portion of the state highways. It's relatively flat site. If you were to go stand on Hogan, look due east from the, from the ice rink, you'd see a relatively flat space. There's potential for complementary uses to co-locate in this area that might collectively serve the potential users of an aquatics facility, thinking along the lines of additional restaurants, maybe hotel. The, as far as the impact of an aquatics facility, there's gonna be light, there'll be noise, there'll be traffic, visual elements. This presents itself furthest from any existing neighborhoods. And as far as a negative, this is one of the site, two of the four sites are privately owned, two are owned and can be controlled by the village. This one is privately owned, so we need to negotiate, have discussions with the owner. Proximity to neighborhoods, meaning this is furthest from neighborhoods of all the sites. So the notion of walkability, bikability, et cetera, this challenge is presented here. And it's not master planned. In other words, we haven't talked with the developer, or we haven't talked with the multiple landowners on this side of Hogan Road to really paint the picture of what we hope this will look like. We've got, in the comp plan, general kind of color swashes. We've got some, we've got some yellow down here for residential and some orange as mixed use and then some industrial, but we've not dug deep into exactly how this area's gonna work and play out. So that would be in front of us. And that relates to the further consideration then, which would be discussion with an owner and then further engineering analysis. And with this, if it's okay, I'll just posit each one to take questions and sort of dive in a bit, and then we'll move on to the next, if that's okay. And Sue, do you have any additional comments on the site?
Nope, I think you nailed it.
Okay.
Board members' questions about this site or comments?
You know, I guess if there's gonna be residential in that area, maybe we get the parkland dedication for that area for a pool, so we wouldn't have to buy the land, that would be a positive for that site, maybe, if that could be worked out.
I think that, that could be an element of negotiation, I suppose.
I think, I think in all these sites, if we have to, if we have to spend a million dollars to buy a piece of land, it's gonna make this a pretty difficult thing to pass.
I'm just trying to stay quiet right now because I want everybody to absorb, and you're right on the mark with that, Gary. With our new plats of our subdivisions, we generally have parkland dedication, and that has potential with this site. I don't, I guess I don't know the answer, Brian. Maybe you can help me with that.
I think, I agree.
If it's parkland, if it's parkland dedication, can we put a pool in there, if it's a community pool?
If it's open, if it's open to, the community pool, yeah, I believe you could. How many, how many acres were we talking for the indoor/outdoor? Do you remember?
I believe it was like five to seven.
Five to seven.
Okay, any other questions on this site?
We can circle back to these as, as you care to. The next one is Water Wheel South. There is land that was dedicated to the village for parkland use. Okay, so here's Buck and Honey's, the, the Quick Trip. And then, as you go up Water Wheel, there's a portion of land here that is dedicated for parkland. We would have imagined a park someday of some sort, right, Sue?
For sure.
But that is about five acres, is that right, or is it larger than that?
You keep talking and I'll get back to you.
But there is a piece of village-owned land that, that we could consider for a site. That itself being one of the pros to a site like this. Accessibility in relation to proximity to neighborhoods is a pro. Existing infrastructure runs throughout this corridor, and then there's already commercial offerings nearby. And in terms of con, this site presents itself closely adjacent to existing residential homes. Although, a park, park use here at some point was expected, the discussion of an aquatics facility at this site was, hadn't been discussed prior to this neighborhood being built.
13.2 acres, Todd.
Thirteen?
13.2.
Okay, so it's a good size.
Have we confirmed the actual buildable space on that property? That might have been one of the engineering questions we didn't have the answer to.
It is mapped as parkland by the village, but according to Tim, it's identified as environmental corridor by CARPSY, and so there is some conversation that needs to be had there to confirm that question.
Okay.
So, and that, you know, obviously, I identify engineering analysis as further work that we would have to do. So, you know, in terms of limited expandability, I guess, you know, maybe not, maybe so. Certainly, it's not as vast and open buildable area as is the Hogan Road site for comparison purposes. The further consideration also, we note that, you know, discussions with the immediate surrounding neighborhood would be critical in a process to consider this site. So with that, I'll pause. Sue, do you have any additional items related to this?
I think a positive and a negative for this site, a negative is it's, it is fairly close to one of our homeowner association pools. But a positive is that it's also walkable from that Simon Crestway neighborhood up by the high school, a neighborhood that's really quite underserved by parkland, and it's very accessible to people that live in that neighborhood. So, kind of a plus and a minus for neighbors.
Yeah, I would, I would note there's actually, within this picture, there's two, there's two neighborhood pools. One is right there, and then the one up here. Okay, so we're pausing for questions. Okay, so we're pausing for questions.
Questions? No?
Okay. Heading west, this one, this one might require some creativity in, in perceiving the potential. Largely because this area, like the east side, is not, is not developed, as the developer would call Kill Kenny West. You know, this is largely going to be residential neighborhood development this way. Intermediate school is here, that's the intermediate school. So the notion here would be to locate a facility in proximity to the intermediate school, so there could be some, some, you know, location benefits for an aquatic facility so close to a population during the school day of, of kids who would really be interested in using a facility like that. The, we see that potentially, being that it's not construct, there's no construction here yet, we think it's a flexible space. You know, we can creatively locate a facility like this in collaboration with a developer as they master plan this area. Currently, there's some isolation from residential neighborhoods in terms of the light, light noise and traffic impacts, although keep in mind development would occur around it eventually. Neighborhood just to the north is one of those, actually, the large area to the north, that residential area all is without a neighborhood version of a pool. Again, this is not owned by the village, not master planned. We discussed that element earlier. So here we would again have some negotiation discussions with the owner and certainly engineering analysis to consider a site. Sue?
I think accessibility is something to consider on this site. First of all, the, the streets that would get you to the swimming pool have not been constructed yet, so there's potential for some additional costs there. So that's a, that's a negative. I think a positive, however, the intermediate school is located in that neighborhood, and we know already that kids are able to get themselves to school there. It is a, it's a school that has a lot of walking and bike traffic. And so one of the goals is to try to find a location where kids can get themselves to, to the pool. And this is one that we know that kids can already get themselves there. So challenges and some positives with this location.
Pause for the board, then Chris.
Board questions? No, no.
I like the site from a, being next to the school, and if you could get some joint use, it'd be great for the schools. I like that aspect of it.
Okay. The fourth site to toss out there is maybe, maybe not one that you would, that you would suspect. But the, there is a, remind me the name of that, that marshland. I, I ask you every time, I never-
Wilkie?
The Wilkie Reserve, right. There was a farmhouse, farmstead property right, right there back when that I think the fire department maybe did a control burn on at some point, owned by the county. And now that exists as unused open space adjacent here. Initial discussions with the county, because county has a element of ownership there, right? Or limitation on use?
The county owned, Prairie Park is four acres. And then the county owns the property just north of it, which is an additional five point six acres. And we, we did have a preliminary conversation with the folks at the county. They withheld that five point six, six acres of high ground with the idea that there could be someday a partnership with the village for park purposes. At that point in time, there was nothing specific in mind. But we did reach out to them and ask them if they would be willing to have a conversation about the use of that park, and they indicated, yes, they were.
Okay, so not entirely village-owned, but certainly partnership potential that appears positive and not, not on the pro side of things. This is relatively, you know, of all the choices, this one presents itself as most central perhaps for the village and for access from a large number of residents, certainly to the north side of Main Street. There's no HOA pools in the area. Close proximity to Prairie School presents as an advantage. And again, that's an area where we have existing infrastructure in place. Of all, similar to the Water Wheel site, this one stands very close to existing neighborhoods. You know, due, due other side of Madison, we have some condos. I'm not sure if it's a, might be a 55 and older condo development perhaps. And then neighborhood's immediately adjacent to the, to the southwest as well. So we also see this as a site that might have limited expansion capabilities. Also for this from commercial uses. So again, we have a county discussion that would need to take place, and we may need to look at urban service area review, and certainly engineering as well. But that is the, the fourth location. What else, Sue, do you have to add?
Well, I think we're good here.
Okay.
We're good here.
So this is definitely not a full-blown technical analysis and review of the sites. What we expect of the village board tonight is that you may direct us to undertake further evaluation of sites, which then we would start diving further into, okay, what's the kind of cost to do engineering analysis? Or you might hone us in on a couple, but, or you might have other ideas. That, that's where, that's what we're, the point we're at today.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, Todd, is that this list is not exclusive. There, there could be other options. This list of four sites came out of a conversation with several staff team members or consultants. But if you all have other thoughts and ideas, we definitely would be willing to review those further as well.
Okay.
I like the Madison site best of all. I looked at that some years ago when I wanted to talk about a splash bag there. And I think it's centrally located. It's, uh, the area on the other side is owned by a developer, and he's going to be putting houses there probably fairly soon. It's also fairly close to heritage, so it's as centrally located as we could possibly be.
The other side, Phil, you're referencing is on the north side of EZ, right?
Right.
We do show in our comp plan a little kind of a residential bubble-
Yeah.
-on the north side of EZ.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have a question. How many acres potentially could that north site be?
Well, again, the county property is five point six five acres. And then Prairie Park, which is adjacent to it, is four acres. But a portion of that park is already developed, so-
Okay.
It's a, it's probably our tightest facility.
Brian, I have a question, just one, a procedural question, I want to make sure I'm not doing anything wrong.
Sometimes, Sue, I think too, if, if Prairie Park, let's say, that, that, everybody says, hey, this is the great location. You know, I sometimes think, we, we look at a park and say, well, gosh, there's a tennis court there, so we can't do, that has to stay there, we can't develop that. I think in this situation, we'd have to look at that whole property and say, if the tennis court goes away, it goes away, and we're going to do this. And we'll move a tennis court somewhere else. Or it's just an asset to the pool area if it's large enough, because you got to multi, multi-things going on there.
Sorry, that wasn't usual, I usually wouldn't do something like that. But I just want to make sure we're doing everything proper with, with what we do this. And I'm going to share a story quick, and then I'm going to ask the board members, just with a straw poll that's anonymous, to rank the four sites right now in their own minds, what they think would be best. So I made just four pieces of-
We can't do it anonymously.
They have to talk?
Yeah, I mean-
I'm just trying to get a feel for which ones, number one, two, three, four, five, generically. All right, so we can't do that. So we can, we can have you rank them then apparently, as long as they state it.
Yeah, they can definitely rank, and we can talk about the discussion, yes.
So the, the pool conversation's an interesting one to me because I have, in the past, been asked to come into third-grade classrooms and talk about local government. And I've been doing that with different classrooms, and the topic I choose is the, a pool. And I have all the kids get together as the Parks Committee. And I try to teach them what the Parks Committees are, and are different committees within the community, and then the village board. And so I have seven of the kids become Parks Committee members. And I ask questions about pool. You know, would you like a small pool? Would you like a medium-sized pool? Would you make like a large pool? Okay, and the kids give all their feedback, and then the committee members are listening, the seven kids. And then I talk about, would you like to have a diving board? And would you like to have this? And they go through this whole process, and then they pick, of course, the most grand. And with everything they could possibly get into it. And then I tell them, well, that's going to be really expensive from, expensive from a tax perspective. Who's for it? Half the kids, half the kids don't. Okay, so you know the ones that are already cognizant of, all right, the taxes, they hear it from their parents or whatever it is. So kids are actually a pretty good sounding board because they have no filter at that time. They'll say what they think. And that's kind of what's happening in the community already. I said last meeting that the negatives were going to come out first, and then the positives would come back in, in return. And lo and behold, the first article in the newspaper was a negative comment about the pool. And that's great. You know, we want to hear all the feedback we can from different residents on things. And the site selection, we aren't, we're going through and picking a site to go on as a referendum question. That's going to be part of this whole process. And as Sue mentioned, there's a referendum that's going to take place that people are going to be able to choose. I want to be very clear to the public that we're not saying, as a village board, we're getting a pool. The public is deciding whether we're going to have a pool. We're trying to make it so it's possible to have the pool, that we can afford to have the pool before it gets on a referendum thing, that if we put out there, well, it's $27 million to do this, and our budget's going to all go out of whack and everything, and everybody votes for it. Then we're in a bad spot too, okay? So we have to go through this whole process to make sure we're educating the public. And if you choose not to educate yourself, and I'm doing my little lecture right now for all those out there that may watch this or hear about it, please educate yourself. If you choose not to educate yourself, that's when you're not making an informed decision about anything with regards to government or what's happening in your community. Please participate and engage, is, is what I'm getting at. Two people came in tonight in regards to apartments, okay? Not 150 or 300 or 700 people that were here. We'd love to hear from all those folks. And you're right, he was right. We'd love to give everybody a hun, you know, 20, 20 minutes, 30 minutes to talk about their topic. We'd never finish though, okay, with, with our meetings. This is, this is not feasible. But this particular topic, I will tell you, I want to go through. If you don't, if you guys don't want to share right now, you don't have to. Phil, you kind of did already, but- My choice, which it always has been, from the very first seeing this, is Hogan East. And I do see that as an area that's going to grow. The way we've designed our paths and structuring those to get people to it, there's going to be many options to get out to that location. I do believe that we'll be able to work with the developer, owner of the property, to get that site. And there is building that's going to be going on around it. All of our sites, with the exception really at this point of Water Wheel South, because I think that's, that's dedicated no-build zone, just to the south of that. So there's really not going to be anything there. And also Water Wheel, I'll, I'll, let me stay on Hogan East. Hogan East has the potential for growth, things that are commercial that'll go around it, and it's very visible as you're coming to the community, which I think is great. It's just the opposite for me of Prairie North. I think Phil, Prairie North is perfect for a spray park. I think that site is, is tailor-made for that. I agree with you 100%. But I don't think it's going to be very visible where it's located. And my concern is if we did put it out there, Prairie School being right down the road, if you go to Prairie School and see the traffic that goes through there, if you add a pool in combination with that on that one road, I think we'd, we have to figure out how we can get people there more effectively. So Prairie North is probably my third choice. My least favorite choice is actually Water Wheel South. I just, I, I think that's where we're going to spark a hornet's nest with the residents over there and putting that in after the fact. That road would also become, we, we were already concerned about people going through that as a cut-through. That'll become a major cut-through for all that and heavy traffic coming through certain neighborhoods. The intermediate school site, I have some likings towards that one, but it doesn't have visibility where it would be located. So I'm a little concerned with that. I, and we did have in our meeting, I sat in and listened the other day for all the different committee members when they were talking. It doesn't matter where we place this. People are going to have to cross Highway Q or Highway-
Nineteen.
113-19. They're going to have to cross one way or another. It's similar to the library, when we moved the library from one side of Main Street to the other side of Main Street. So the group that was, one side or the other has to cross it. There's, there's just part of it. So it's, our job is to make sure that we have accessibility for people to safely cross those areas the best we can. So those are some of my initial responses to the different sites. Anybody else want to share? You don't have to. I just, I just shared what I thought right there.
I just have a question. Why is visibility so important? I mean, we have all kinds of parks and facilities, and I, from what I understand, they're kind of mapped out. People can get on the website and see where they are. They'll find a pool. Why does it need to be, the visibility is really a topic?
You want me to take it, or do you want to take it?
No.
So visibility would be more, because of the nature of what we're talking about, indoor/outdoor, it's going to become an attraction, because we're the only ones that have that in the area. Nobody else has that capability. So if it's an outdoor pool, Sumprea has an outdoor pool, Middleton has an outdoor pool, Lodi has an outdoor pool, they all have that. But in the wintertime, those are closed. We now become a destination spot, which is where you're going to see the hotels and the restaurants and the others. Now, are we trying to become a destination spot? If we're not, then visibility doesn't matter.
That's what I was going to ask. Do we want to become a destination spot? Is this going to be a primarily, I mean, we can't control people coming in. But is this primarily going to be a community pu, pool for the people of Wanakee? Or is it going to be a destination spot?
And that's the indoor/outdoor thing.
Correct. If it's indoor/outdoor, it's going to become a destination spot. Which, if we look at, we can look at two different ways with that. Do we want people coming in? People in Middleton, people in Lodi, we all are going to their locations right now in the summertime, because we don't have that. So then coming here, I think, and I'm, I'm not, I shouldn't speak for the business community, but the business community would probably prefer people coming into town to spend their money here and keep our residents here, spend theirs as well. From a financial standpoint, that's a good thing.
So then across EZ Street, is there a master plan for that? What's going in across EZ Street?
By Prairie North?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that there's a master plan. I think there's potential for residential.
But is there a potential that it could be looked at in another way, where things would be done differently there, other than residential?
Sure.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
Comp plan is just a plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So that, thank you for answering my questions. I like Prairie North because I think it's more centrally located. It's in an area where the families who live in, in that area of town, many of them don't, some of them have access to a pool, but most of them don't. And I feel that it's easier for the, the families that were, are working families during the day, it'll be more accessible for the, the children to get to. Maybe that's totally wrong, but that's how I see it. It, it's more available to, to the families that currently do not have access to pools.
So I, I'm, I think you're the only one that's in an area that has, is that correct?
Right, right.
So we all are not in areas that have access to pools, this whole group right now? And I would, I would share that your logic for that, while it seems sound. If I'm coming from my residence, which is over by Rip Park, I'm having a long ways to go, and I'm, and kids aren't going to probably have it difficult. If I'm coming where Phil is, it's the same thing. They're going across Highway Q to the deep side of Prairie. Same thing for Bill, because you guys aren't very far away. Erin's on Main Street, so it's not too bad for her to get over there. But there's others in, in the community that are going to have a real challenge with that, especially with the, and I don't know this for sure, but I think Don's subdivisions, the new one, Arboretum, those aren't having pools in them. So those, people are still going to need that as well, if we're going to put the pool. So that's part of all this, so it doesn't really, that's what I was getting at, where it doesn't really matter where we put it. There's going to be challenges for people to get to it.
And if you really think about these neighborhoods that do have pools, this is an indoor/outdoor pool, so- And, and if you really think about these neighborhoods who do have pools, this is an indoor/outdoor pool, so for three months of the year, they have access to their pool, if they want to pay the money to do it. But a lot of families don't join their neighborhood pool for those three months, and the other, you know, nine months out of the year, they'd be using the indoor pool, so the, the argument about having a neighborhood pool, it's a pretty small group of people. It actually, and the kids that actually use it, because I told you before, by the time they're ten or twelve years old, they don't go to the neighborhood pool anymore. They don't want to go there, because their parents are there. So those kids, and even those areas that have neighborhood pools, I don't think you want to block out those areas, because they have a pool. Only maybe at, I don't know, ten percent of the neighbors join the pool? And it's only for three months out of the year, and it's only when their kids get to be about ten years old. So it leaves a big, there's not a, a large population that takes advantage of that.
I can jump in to confirm that our research did play that out. Sue can comment, too. I know we asked our consultant Sue the question, maybe you did, Chris, someone during our, our workgroup meeting, along the lines of, George, what do you see in the industry in terms of people finding their way to an aquatics facility regardless of its location? In other words, do you, are you seeing a lot of walkers and bikers? Or are you seeing families these days all getting in their cars and making their way? We posed the question. Did he have, did he have specific advice for us? Do you remember?
You know, I, I, clearly, a swimming pool that is nestled in a neighborhood is, is a dream come true. You know, as many kids as possible that can get themselves there is a, is a dream come true. But our community is large enough that we can't, someone in our community is not going to be able to ride their bike to this pool if they're eleven years old. I would also say, I think, as Todd pointed out, what George shared with us, with the industry, you know, think about a mom or a dad that's loading up her three kids to come to the pool for the afternoon. She's not walking or biking, even if it's more than four blocks. She's loading them all into the, into the minivan with all of the stuff that she needs to take along. So I think the reality of percentage of people that actually are going to get themselves walking or biking to the pool is probably lower than, than it was when we were kids. I crossed a really busy highway on my bike to get to the pool when I was a kid, and I don't think I would let my, my children do that same thing in that same neighborhood. So it's important, but I don't know that it's a, a deal-breaker.
So a little Jiminy Cricket back here is always talking, making sure that I think of the community as a whole. We're not even really addressing our seniors and our other population when we talk about location, right now. Because they're not going to more than likely walk. Some will, but most won't. They'll want to go there for the different features that we would have inside potentially. Whether it's warm water, to a current that they're walking against for exercise, therapy, whatever it may be. So there's, there's all, we have to focus on what's the whole community, not just one segment of it. And kids are an important part of this, don't get me wrong, but everybody. And everybody's access and usage, because that's, the, the word "community" is for everyone. And the, the neighborhood pools, they're not. They're not for everyone. That's a problem. For the rest of the community that feels maybe that they don't have something. And this is why we're considering this, and why the community is going to vote on this, and what they feel on it. So really, it's our job to ask these questions, the hard questions, figure some things out, and then put it to them.
I have a question. I, I know nobody has the answer. But when the, as development occurs on Division Street, as that area develops, will that change, how much will that change the traffic patterns? Because right now, everything goes down in front of my house on Verlin. Well, how much will be going, how much of it will be moved? You know, what I'm saying is, how much will that, you, you brought up the traffic pattern in that area because of the school. How much will that, or how much of it will come from Schumacher, and, you know, we don't know that. I don't know that. I don't think we have a crystal ball to know that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah. I, I agree. You're talking about when Division goes over the top of the hill.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, or people start leaving the Veridian Development, and some of them will go down Schumacher, and are, you know, or, there's different ways to go at that point, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, get, are you still wanting to do the poll process?
I'm still in my poll process, if anybody has.
If that's the case, Nyla just shared her top one, and I don't know if you cared to elaborate on the others, Nyla.
I, I like the Intermediate West. You know, I, I guess I'm open to listening and hearing what everybody has to say, and trying to come up with the same, the best location. I guess one thing that I would like to, that, you know, went, many years ago, when I was working on a pool project, everyone was talking about a community pu, pool for their families, and, you know, I don't know that we, so many people were thinking, I know, I wasn't, we, wasn't thinking about it being, becoming a destination. And, you know, that's going, if we, and I, at the same time, I see the need to, because there's people who want the warm water, they want an indoor pool, they want access year-round. So this is not going to be an, and there isn't an easy answer. Because I, I just think a destination pool is above and beyond what a lot of people were thinking. I've already heard that.
And if you want me to rank them, I'm, since I'm next, I'd say Madison, and then Hogan. Intermediate, and the last is the most visible, but I just don't like that being right there by the highway.
Say that again, Phil.
Madison, Hogan Road, and then the Intermediate School.
Okay. Phil?
I'm going to go Hogan, because everybody can, you can get there from either in or out of town. And I think that's, over the years, that's, the hockey rink there, you're, you're sharing a lot of potential, so to speak. And then I don't like any of the other ones. Except you could put maybe a, a splash pool on top of the old library.
Satellite.
Wild card, wild card.
Well, downtown, I think downtown, I mean, my argument is, and I wasn't part of this process, is like, the most underserved area is actually right around Heritage. And putting a, if I was picking, I would say, one of those little splash pad type things in that range would serve so many people so quickly. But it's, it's separate from this type of project, because we, we found enough space in there to put. If I was doing, I put Hogan with a real thing, and a splash pad down, splash pad downtown.
Okay. Erin?
I guess I ranked mine with the idea of indoor/outdoor, but I don't think we're there yet. But I have Prairie North as my top one. I think the library has shown that it's really a good spot to get to, and we already have, like, you know, people of all ages can get to, kids coming after school, still to the library from Intermediate, or any of the schools. I think it's an amenity that that prairie is right there. Like, it's, you know, swimming, and you have some nature, and, you know, you're not looking at houses, or, I mean, you are. It's obviously next to a neighborhood, but, um, also, that's, I mean, we've kind of talked about things popping up nearby, like, that's the closest to already our existing businesses and commercial. Like, it's not that far. It's half a mile, not even to get up to Main Street and restaurants, or wherever. I think I have Todd for second, the Hogan and Intermediate, because I think they leave a lot of possibility, and I like that, and I think we could create something really great. But, yeah, there's no infrastructure. We don't have any of that stuff built in, and they're privately owned. But I think Intermediate would be more attractive to me than Hogan, because it's, like, what's around it. And, I mean, I rode my bike to La Crosse in Savannah, like, as a kid, and then to the Ice Pond for La Crosse, like, that field next to it. It's like, it's fine to get to, but it's not that easy. You're biking through industrial park, uphill, downhill, and obviously, there's, like, different access. But I think the neighborhood pools, the consideration is like, okay, when, if those are only, like, five to ten-year-olds, whatever, then you have all the five to ten-year-olds that don't have a neighborhood pool. Let's say that this is there, and like, that seems Prairie's the closest. I don't know. I think Water Wheel, it just doesn't really seem right that we were to plop all of the neighborhood pools on there. That's the farthest away from the majority of people that don't have access to that. But, I don't know. Yeah, I guess a lot of those are just initial thoughts, and, um, I live closest to Prairie, but that doesn't necessarily impact it, I think. I was really hesitant when I first heard that. I was like, whoa, that would not be a good spot, but just kind of like, even being out there, like, looking and walking by, I'm like, oh, that could maybe be fit in nicely, and kind of what Gary said, if, you know, even combining it with Prairie Park, like, obviously, that's a developed park, but if we can, you know, be creative and reimagine, like, keep those amenities, but add in a pool, so. I guess those are my initial rambles.
Alright, thanks. Gary?
It's easy being last, because I've changed my mind three times already. Here's, here's my dream, you know? The schools are going to move the junior high, or the seventh and eighth, out to the Woodland site. And I look at that and say, gosh, if we had a, if we could work with the schools, and say, you know what? Hey, we're going to, we're going to put an indoor/outdoor pool facility there that the schools could use during the school year, and have an indoor facility, they could do swim lessons, they could, you know, the kids could have access to that pool, and, hey, you build us some extra parking lot, and we'd share a parking lot. To me, that makes that site really attractive, because now kids starting in fourth grade could have access to swimming. And I, and I look back at most kids' lives who didn't have access to swimming, or lessons. They missed so much, where I think that would just be a cool thing, if we could work with the schools on a site. And maybe we build it before they build the, the junior high there, but I, I, I just like that idea. Because I think we'd really be serving the taxpayers, because they wouldn't have to build a duplicator facility, and we'd actually be giving something to all the kids in the community. Water Wheel's probably my next site. Excuse me, not Water Wheel. I did, I did have Water Wheel, because we talked tonight about, you know, there's senior housing there already, near there. We talked about this transition area that's going to have senior housing in it. So I got to think, well, gosh, there's a lot of seniors in that area. Water Wheel might be a good location. But I think some of the other comments that have been made, you know, Hogan, to me, jumps ahead of that, because it's kind of a blank slate. If we can get the land donated, then it's pretty viable, I think, because we can kind of create what we want. Prairie North, I think, is just going to be too small a site. I, I just don't, I don't see that one working out for us. I, I just, so, that's my logic.
So this played out kind of actually exactly how I wanted it to. So you can see how hard this is going to be for us, but also for the community. We're just trying to pick the site. We haven't even really gone into all the other stuff. That's going to be much more intensive. And what I'm getting at is Renee and Todd convincing and talking. It wasn't much of a convincing to back us up for some more time. We really do need the time, so we can make the right decision to get the right referendum question for people that if they want to say yes, great. If they say no, that's okay, too. That's what this is about. We're just trying to, to get all the information out there. And Roberta's going to have a great job of doing that for us, at least part of, part of the Tribune, but also on our websites, we need to make sure we're posting as much information for the community as possible to educate them on all that the pool can do for everyone. And the hardest part about this whole pool thing, in, in my opinion, is the people that are going like this before we've really even opened it up. Please have an open mind as we go, and listen to the conversations, be part of the conversations, send us emails. I, I just wanted to get that out there, for people to, to give us response. We had a great sixteen-hundred-plus people respond to the survey, which, it's a survey. You know, and then people are going to say, well, they're asking questions to get an answer one way or another, but no. We're trying to get a feel for, do people want to have a pool, and what do they want to have for a community pool? And that's why I'm inviting you. All of our emails are on the website. If you haven't emailed me before, please feel free to email anytime, or call, to get answers. We may not have them at that moment, but we have a great staff that will get answers for us to get for you. So I, I know there's one person in the room tonight, and I'm not going to point anybody out, but there's one person that asked questions today, that we got information out to that person as, as fast as we could, in regards to the pools and where, where our existing pools are. So, Gary?
Chris, I, I guess, the one thing I want to make sure the public understands, too, is that, you know, I really want to see how we can serve the senior population. Maybe because I'm, maybe because I'm there now, but it's important to me. Maybe that's transportation, maybe it's some other way, but how do we make sure they have access to this facility? Because I think, you know, they need, you know, we got a great senior center, that's great, but I would really like to have this amenity that helps serve that population.
Agreed. And I think they all want to be part of it, too. The different, you know, the Bright Stars, and Ed Holmes, and Dean, plus the some, you know, with their clients, and so on and so forth. We're having the physical therapy aspects of it. I think that, that's a great thing. But then again, who knows where we're going to end up? We're going to go through the work and effort to get it done, though, so people can make a decision. So I think that's a good spot to end the discussion for tonight. Are we good with it, Sue? Where we're at? Okay.
Can I request something?
Sure.
I don't know if this already exists, or if that's, like, do we have a map of the density of the village? Like, where, you know, because we say, like, middle, but it's like, there might be a lot more multifamily, or, you know? Geographical middle versus where most people live. I don't know if that exists, but that might be, you know, just us making a decision, like, oh, it's in the middle, or that's closest, but is it closest to more people, or just more space?
I know who to ask.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think that's a great question. And the other, the other thing that's been such a challenge is five to six acres. Where do you find five to six acres that we have just at our disposal? Notice, there's nothing in the middle for us to go towards.
We already used it with the line.
So, yeah, that's, that's it, so. Perfect. Alright. Mr. Anam.
Who did you, Jen?
Second.
Urgent by Dr. Anam, and second by Erin. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Nice to have it. Thank you, everybody, for joining tonight.
Hey, Don.
Happy New Year.
Thank you for the discussion.
Thanks for getting.
Happy New Year, that's right.